Call to order, the St. Joseph City Council meeting of September twentieth. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Keep up. Item two. Item two, public comments. Anybody wishing to stand before the council today? Okay, step up, step up, one and all. Okay. Item three, approve the agenda.
I move to approve the agenda.
Second.
Motion and second to approve the agenda. Any other actions needed? All those, all those in favor signify by aye. Aye. Opposed, we are approved. Uh, item four, consent agenda.
Who to approve with this one question on item C?
For Lori.
Motion and second. You want to just talk about it?
Yeah, I'm just curious, uh, years ago when we started renting out the space for cell towers, I think two thousand one, cell two thousand one was the first one out there. At that time, we set aside the monies for the leases to go into water tower maintenance or, you know, for repainting in the future. Is that still, I know the last time we painted it, there was some question and that got screwed up somehow. Is that money still being allocated for that purpose?
We do still put it in the water fund.
Okay.
And so it's overall covering everything in the water fund, but we are putting money aside for water tower maintenance as well in the water fund, so it is helping to cover, um, those rates.
Okay, I know, years ago we set it for the repainting and, you know, ten, fifteen year.
The, the problem was is the recession and that water fund taken ahead a few years back.
Yeah.
But we are trying to build those funds in there now.
Okay, good.
Motion.
That's all I wanted to clarify.
Thank you. Motion and second, consent agenda, all items. Any other questions or concerns? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion does prevail. Item five, Northland Business Center, have a whole thing, slew of things on here.
Yeah, good evening, mayor, members of the council. Um, Theresa, if we can flip over, I want to pull up a PowerPoint here. So we'll take the next three items, five, A, B, and C, kind of as one package, but we will need separate action on each one of those. So for your consideration this evening is a plat proposal for Northland Business Center, second edition. So the applicant is CLC Partners and they are proposing to final plat two lots, which totals seventeen plus acres and that's including some of the right of way. Part of this plat proposal requires the applicant to vacate interior easements from the previous plat, rededicate the new easements per the new lot lines, and then realign the right of way on Twenty-Fourth Avenue into a T intersection. Right now, that intersection curves, so that's part of the vacation request is to vacate part of that and, um, turn it into a T intersection. So again, these are the properties that we're talking about. Um, we're out in the new industrial park area. Uh, this is the plat that shows the realignment on the intersection, so where you can see Outlet G up in the upper right corner. That would be the, the T intersection right there. You can kind of see the outline of how the roadway currently is dedicated as it curves. This is just a depiction of the easements that are being vacated here. And then this is the right of way vacation. So part of a final plat, do you have a question, Bob?
You can go finish, finish, I'm just gonna...
Okay. So part of the final plat, uh, does require a developer's agreement. So the construction of the public improvements, which includes First Street and Twenty-Fourth Avenue Northeast, are not being required as part of this plat. Um, that strategy avoids piecemeal and road extensions as they come online, um, especially with the unknown factors like traffic generation, development of the other lots along the corridor. Um, we have a proposed southwest belt line alignment where we don't know exactly where that's gonna, um, fall into place, and then also the construction of Westwood Parkway. So all those factors would, um, contribute to the timing of the whole construction of Twenty-Fourth Avenue Northeast. So, uh, trunk charges would be payable at time of building permit. Uh, this stays consistent with how the fees were collected as part of the first phase of this development. The park fees have already been paid as per of that first phase for the, the plating of the industrial park. Um, stormwater fees, uh, would be due, but we did include a, uh, attachment, um, updated developer's agreement that was handed out earlier, and that essentially states that the developers can, can get credit for stormwater infrastructure. Um, that credit is determined, uh, in part by the engineer and what would be acceptable. So, some actions that we do need, again, this is a, a three piece, but, uh, one package at the same time. So, we do need to conduct a public hearing for the vacation of the interior easements, uh, motion on that resolution, a public hearing for vacating portions of the right of way, a motion on that resolution, and then finally, a motion on the final plat resolution. So with that, I'd be happy to answer questions, should you have them.
No, I just got a, kind of a statement here. Planning commission approved all three unanimously. Okay. And my only concern is I'm still waiting for the engineering comments. We didn't have any at the planning commission meeting, but, uh, I don't know if Randy has any of them or not, or...
There isn't traditional, you, you, I think you're more accustomed to seeing a preliminary plat, uh, uh, development plan and, and site plan submittal as part of the plat. So this is kind of a different animal and why there isn't, uh, the traditional engineering comments that, that you would see because if, there isn't necessarily a, a site plan for me to review just yet. So, the action being taken with the reconfiguration of the plat is really more just that, the, the boundary lines and the right of way changing, and then the developer's agreement. So what you will see eventually is, say, TROBEX completes a site plan submittal, then the, the traditional engineering comments would follow with, with the TROBEX submittal. In this case, there's, uh, less direct engineering comments, if you would.
Okay, I've got one more, one more, uh, concern. Twenty-Fourth Avenue, is that, who owns that? The easement?
So that's dedicated as right of way, right now?
But who, who has the property rights there? Is it CLC or is it, uh, Knife River?
Nope, the ci- the city, the right of way was dedicated with the first edition plat, so those rights of ways for Twenty-First and Twenty-Fourth Avenue were dedicated with the original plat. So that, those are public rights of way according to the recording of the first plat.
Okay, have, have, have those been purchased or not yet?
They're, you, they're dedicated, so...
They're dedicated, so when, once they become in, then they get purchased by the city?
Well, yeah, and actually you don't, you don't technically purchase them, so when the developer plats or has control of that property, they reserve those corridors as part of the plating process. So when they platted or recorded the plat for the first phase, those rights of way were preserved at that time.
So I just pulled up the map here, so you can see the Twenty-Fourth Avenue Northeast connecting up to Westwood Parkway. Um, that's showing how it's currently dedicated right now on the county and in the records.
And also, I heard through the grapevine that there is something going on more east of that with that road alignment?
So that might be the belt line?
Not that I want to speculate, but let, can we concentrate on the vacation and the, versus what may or may not be happening to the east property? I mean, I really want, kind of want to get through this without any kind of other speculation, if you don't mind. And maybe you and Randy and Nate can have a conversation about what may or may not be happening east of that property. So that being said, I'm gonna open the public hearing for vacation of interior easements. Anybody wishing to speak to the council? If you guys want to speak. You too. Anybody online there? Very good. Seeing no one come forward, we're gonna close the public hearing and look for a motion then.
I move to approve twenty twenty-one fifty-three to vacate easements.
Motion and second, twenty twenty-one, what is it? Twenty twenty-one forty-three?
Fifty-three.
Sorry, sorry, twenty twenty-one fifty-three. Vacation of easements. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Then I'll open the public hearing for vacation of portions of right of way. Anybody wishing to speak? Close the public hearing and look for another motion, please.
Move to approve twenty twenty-one dash oh five four.
I second.
Motion and second, resolution twenty twenty-one fifty-four, uh, vacation of right of way. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And are we approving the final plat here as well?
Correct.
Twenty twenty-one fifty-five.
I'll move also on that motion, twenty twenty-one oh five five.
Second.
Second, motion and second, uh, approval of the final plat and developer's agreement. I have a question. As the, we just saw this today as it came in, it was highlighted in the notes. And it says, and I'm not arguing much with it, but the developer will be given credit for the acceptable stormwater infrastructure approved by the city engineer. Uh, and, uh, I think some time ago, um, CSP might take us to court on acceptable water credit or infrastructure water credit. So how do we prevent that? Because we charged them and then they took us to court for being overcharged and we ended up in mediation for a whole day.
So, so that, that action was specifically related to improvements to, to Field Street and, and the conditions that they alleged, uh, relative to, uh, improvements on, on the CSP site. So it didn't, those proceedings didn't invalidate the city's stormwater development fee process. It was, what was called into question is the applicability given the improvements that CSP had constructed.
Okay, very good. I just want to make sure we're not covering, going over the same ground again because that was painful. Very, very painful. Okay, any other question? Motion and second, uh, twenty twenty-one fifty-five, final plat and developer's agreement. Any other questions or concerns? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion does carry. Thank you, Nate, Theresa, guys. Really? You, we had two public hearings and you didn't want to say a darn thing and now you want to say something? Get up here, I don't care, I mean, we gotta be out of here in fifteen minutes, fifteen minutes, so. So you got two.
You guys, because this is the whole TROBEX thing that we've been fighting for and you guys have been fighting for. So I'd like to thank Theresa, Nate, Randy, and all of you guys for working with us. I mean, this is what we need to do and it worked out very well and I just really appreciate it, so, thank you.
Oh, thank you guys for hanging in there. Been a long, tough two years, three years. Anything else with Northland Business Center, is that what it, are we good?
No, that would complete it.
Very good. Item six, painting, water treatment, one, uh, plant one, and police and fire stations. Item six.
Yeah, so, um, Shannon Wager, who, uh, entered into a purchase agreement with the city to buy the old Village Hall, PDE Fire Hall building, um, she would like to paint the exterior before we actually close on it. So we have an active purchase agreement that's executed, but the property will have to be subdivided, the building, and that'll come before you next month. Um, so we anticipate that closing would take place end of October, early November realistically. So before you, as a consideration to allow her to paint, I've had legal weigh-in on that, um, and then there is just a condition that's laid out in your staff memo in regards to, um, not being reversed, reimbursed, excuse me, um, should the closing not occur. And then the second, um, motion that we would like to ask you to consider is, is allowing the city to paint the water treatment portion to match, since we were gonna paint that in a few years anyway. So that would be the second ask this evening, and that would be for forty-five hundred. That would be just the, the forty-five hundred would be that portion. We're not responsible for the cost of, um, the, the part where she's purchasing, so the old garage. Ours would be just for the water treatment. Mm-hmm, correct.
And you said it's gonna, it's slated to be painted in a couple of years anyway? Okay.
So now you do it just to match whatever if we approve her too?
Yes.
So I will, I will move to approve the first motion.
Which would be allow them to build, or to paint prior to purchase? Is that correct?
Correct.
Before it's concealed, okay.
Second.
Motion and second, motion one, approve the painting of the building prior to, uh, purchase agreement being finalized. Questions or concerns?
Just in there, maybe, obviously, if nothing happens or it doesn't go through, we don't, we're not responsible for that.
Mm-hmm.
And we're, we get, you're agreeing to the color and all that good stuff too, I mean...
Well, that would be, that would be...
We get to pick the colors, what you're saying?
Ryan gets to put on the color.
Actually, she has like four shades of, uh...
Pink?
Purple, purple, purple. No, she has four, four shades of, uh, kind of a hunter green style.
Okay. Motion and second, go ahead with the painting. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, item. And the other one is for, just the cost as presented, the quote? Okay. So I saw a move on that to, to accept the quote.
Second.
Motion second to approve painting as presented by the quote. Any questions or concerns?
That's just a quote, right?
It is, that's, it can't be more than that, so.
So my question is, why would something like this come to the council as a motion? This seems like basic building maintenance.
It's, well, ours is three years ahead, three years ahead of schedule.
So this would normally come to the council to approve?
No.
No.
It'd just be in the budget, wouldn't it?
She just wants to go ahead before it's closed.
Well, I know she does, but the second thing is painting a water treatment plant building.
To match, right?
Yeah, the question is, does it really have to be here as a motion?
Yeah, exactly.
Or just go ahead and do it?
Isn't this, isn't this what he does?
He does.
He has money to paint things?
Right, it made sense to bring it all, since she was asking to do it beforehand and it was something that we were planning three years down the route, so we're doing it earlier than, you know, originally anticipated. So it made sense to bring it all.
And I'm not just...
I'm talking about painting our water treatment plant.
What he's saying is, couldn't you...
Technicality.
What he's, I'm not trying to put words in your mouth, but...
No, put words in my mouth.
What I would say is, couldn't he have done it and said, hey, Shannon wanted to paint, so we painted ahead and the cost is forty-five hundred dollars? Versus taking a motion and doing it? Cause the money would be there, we, out of your public works fund, you'd have to figure out how to budget it and all those things. Cause it is, it's maintenance.
Just regular routine. Anyway.
Do they know?
Thank you.
No, I'm just saying, I, I, I don't disagree, but there's nothing wrong with bringing it here and doing it.
Yeah.
Now it's official.
Discussion closed.
Very good.
Let's vote.
Did we vote on this yet?
No.
No, we didn't.
Motion and second on, motion and second on letting, letting Public Works paint the thing. Uh, all those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. We're gonna paint.
Yeah. Uh, Public Works isn't painting yet, the people that are painting, the whole building are painting yet.
It's our budget, his budget. Good point, Bob.
This way we have a warranty.
Okay, item seven, engineer reports. H-SIP.
Good evening. La- last week, uh, MINDOT through the Office of Traffic Engineering, uh, announced their solicitation for, uh, funding applications for what's called the H-SIP or Highway Safety Improvement Program. Uh, this is a, a federal, uh, grant program that, uh, is aimed to reduce, uh, traffic, uh, related fatalities and injuries on, on highways. Um, as, as you can see from the staff memo, the, the maximum grant amount is, is five hundred thousand dollars. Uh, this program, uh, is typically used by counties, large agencies for, uh, improvements such as rumble strips, intersection lighting, traffic barriers. Um, but it has been also leveraged to, uh, to make roundabout improvements, for example. Uh, so staff have discussed the applicability and, and some of the crash data related to the County Road Two Minnesota Street intersection and, uh, between the county engineer and, and, and our team, we believe that that intersection would be a candidate for, for this program. So, uh, unfortunately, the timeframe afforded to, uh, the St. Cloud APO has been pretty tight. Or the reason, uh, why we're bringing it to you now is a week after the announcement is that the application was due to the St. Cloud APO today. And what has changed in the application process is that MINDOT wants, uh, the APOs or MPOs in the state to be involved with the ranking and prioritization of applications. And so in order to build time into this process and to meet the St. Cloud APOs' schedule to, to do the same, we had to make a presumptive application presented to the council today for your action, and if you agree not to proceed, we would retract the application. If you agree to proceed, then it can continue on its, its process through the APO. But, uh, what you can see from the staff report, the maximum award is five hundred thousand dollars. The county would propose to cost share at a level of fifty percent, uh, for the local costs with the city. Um, and then the city would be responsible for any, uh, new right of way that would need to be required to, to build the improvement. The hope is, is that we could fit a roundabout within the right of way that's already been dedicated for the existing County Road Two improvement, but there is some potential that additional right of way would be required. But wanted to be transparent in terms of what the city's obligations would be. Um, given the, the timeframe, there isn't an engineer's estimate available, uh, for what a roundabout at this location would cost. Typical roundabout construction costs are on that order of one point one, one point two million dollars. Uh, I included reference to one point two to one point five as, as a, uh, as a cautionary number. But, um, the potential for cost splits for the city might be anywhere from three quarters of a million to a million, uh, at, at this location. But the program would allow, again, for a half million dollars if, if the city and county prevail, as well as your cost sharing with the county. So that's the, the pluses or the incentives associated with this program. The second opportunity, if you would, there's a, another funding program that hasn't, uh, had its round of solicitations yet. It's the Local Road Improvement Program, which you may have heard. We would likely, or the city would likely have to submit an application, uh, as the lead agency in that scenario versus Stearns County. In this case, Stearns County would be taking the lead and you're supporting the effort as, in a partnership. But, uh, when we look at the crash data and, and, uh, the background that helps support the case for a grant award, uh, we believe that the conditions here would, would, uh, provide a, a, a strong application on behalf of the city. So with that, I'll, I'll open it up for questions.
Yes, Counselor Looswell?
Got a few questions.
Yeah.
Okay, what's the, what's the timeline on this?
So, uh, the solicitation is, is a period of years, so twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-six is, is the solicitation. And, and the more you're open in terms of more flexible, the, 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 the more it helps your application. Now, the county, uh, given the irons that they have in the fire, uh, would target twenty twenty-five to twenty twenty-six. Uh, but if MINDOT said, city, would you be prepared to do something in twenty twenty-four, for example? We probably would want to say yes, but the direct answer to your question is twenty twenty-five and twenty twenty-six is what the application is targeting.
Okay, second question, funding. Is, uh, Minnesota state aid money, uh, appropriate for this project?
Um, it, it, it would have been, uh, what, why I'm pausing, Counselor, is I, I don't believe that section of Minnesota Street is on our state aid system. So because it's not on our state aid system, we can't use state aid dollars. But it would have been otherwise, uh, you would have been able to leverage state aid dollars had it been.
Is it applicable to, uh, does it need that state aid?
Um, the, the limitation that we presently have is, is, if you recall, the, the mileage that we're able to put on our state aid system is in part a function of population and in part a function of the mileage, the total amount of roads that we have. We don't have enough available mileage to get from where the system ends today all the way out to, uh, County Road Two. That's been the limitation in the past, but, uh, we can take a fresh look because you can potentially, uh, de-enlist state aid streets and re-enlist other ones. So if, if it would be a priority for the council, we could take a look at, um, reallocating our, our state aid mileage, I guess is the best way to answer, answer your question.
Okay. Clear as the sky.
Uh, a question, you say, uh, obviously you just want us to authorize the submitting of, of the application. Um, and it says the maximum grant is five hundred thousand. So if you submit it, they don't necessarily have to give you five hundred, or is it a range?
Correct, that, you know, they can, they can, depending on how many projects they feel are, are meritus of, of the grant dollars, they could, they could underfund, if you would. But in the case of a roundabout, um, where we know the project costs are likely to be in excess of a million dollars, it's less likely that they would do that. Um, the example of a project, so for example, let's say it was intersection lighting or crash barriers or rumble strips, something that doesn't cost a half million dollars, then you would see the grant award reduced. But in the case of a roundabout, we're anticipating hopefully a full award.
Okay, anticipating. And then that would put us on a fifty-fifty split with the county for the other seven hundred to million, is what you're thinking?
Yes. I think that's the most important part, is that by making this application, we are agreeing as a city to be a partner with Stearns County and, and you accept fifty percent and, and the right of way costs as being the conditions of, of this application.
And then one more, and if the grant, if we do submit and the grant isn't approved, then what?
So that we're, nothing, yeah, we're, we're back to the drawing board in terms of trying to identify other funding opportunities to partner with Stearns County and, and still tackle the same issue.
Sounds good, thank you.
So I, you know, I, I was at the APO meeting when this came up, L-RIP and H-SIP, and I made Randy, sorry, I asked Randy nicely to see if we're eligible or not. Though, since they put in Minnesota County too, we've had more incidents and accidents and fatalities than any other strip in, in St. Joe. And it's one that we've, well, Mark and Jody came to countless city council meetings to try and figure out solutions, that's where we got the flashing light thing. But we still continue to have close calls. And so the award isn't as much as I, I had hoped, you know, five hundred, we went from four hundred thousand to five hundred thousand. At the same time, it's, it is pretty critical that if we got something done, it would be like, we wouldn't get calls anymore. It's really high profile. At the same time, um, when it comes to long-range planning like that, we really do, I mean, Lori would have to do some juggling, finagling, to figure out how we'd pay for it. Because, you know, we'd have to look at the long-term projects and how that impacts some of the other things. But to me, the reason I wanted to pursue it is because of the number of fatalities we've had at that position, the, the award. I've got, uh, APO, not director, but the chair, kind of committed to one or, one or none. I mean, you, one award or, uh, not break it up into, you know, we get seventy thousand for that and somebody else gets a hundred thousand for this. They've kind of agreed to one of the biggest projects on the list and, and they'll agree to that. So, and Joel represents Stearns County as well, so Jody reports to Joel. Again, I, if we, the application, um, review, again, that's maybe a couple of months, Randy, or something like that?
Typically, yes. So I'm, the, the due date actually isn't until November. So there's actually quite a period here between today and when the applications are due to the state. Um, but it's usually a month or two after, uh, the November deadline that we start finding out.
So part of that discussion at the APO was, APO has to quick set up some guidelines on how to rank the applicants. And they've never done it before, never had to get, get involved, so that's kind of a new step as well. But at the same time, I, I think it's, I think it's important enough for, for us to, again, throw a, uh, buy a ticket and, you know, go to the show, kind of see if we can get some money.
So how many, uh, cities are, uh, putting in an application for this money?
I, I don't know about other cities in the St. Cloud area. We, we do know from the last APO TAC meeting that Stearns County, uh, Sherburne County, and Benton County all intended to submit H-SIP applications.
Okay, so there's more than one county into the pool?
Oh, yes.
Anybody that's in the APO area.
Okay, it's, it's relative to the county applying?
These are the federal funds for this APO. It's not a Minnesota state, it's federal funds for this program.
And then it gets further subdivided between what's called the ATP, uh, Area Transportation, uh, Group. So, uh, the funding that's available is split across the state of Minnesota.
So what you're saying, the five hundred thousand, right, is that all of it split between everything, or?
Uh, no, there, there is more, uh, let's see if I can find, if, Theresa, can you, uh...
And then do you know off the top of your head how many fatalities we've had out there or near?
One that I'm aware of.
I think we've had three.
Three?
We've had three in the... We've had three and then like.
So I have some data on that. We're ATP three, so you can see these are the funds that would be potentially programmed over this solicitation round for ATP three. So it's more than just the five hundred thousand dollars that we're seeking.
Roughly an eight million dollar or what does it say? Thirteen million overall.
Yes, just in twenty twenty-six. So it's the sum of these numbers at the bottom.
So the, and I'm gonna skip ahead, kind of, if we were to be accepted, application gets through and get awarded, then we'd have to have a discussion about long-term transportation issues and concerns and other road improvement projects that, to me, might slip a little bit or move a little bit so we can get that one done. Or something like that. But that's a discussion we should, you know, again, we probably need to have that anyway, some long-term transportation plan, planning.
Yeah, we haven't talked about that for.
We have for a long time, yeah. So, so the question for you, councilors, and again, I'm in favor of it because of the number of events we've had, is to move forward with the application. I mean, it did get submitted, if you know, then we'll just tell Jody to pull it and we'll figure it out later, but.
I'll move to that effect.
Motion second to move forward? Motion second to move forward, any other questions or concerns? All those in favor signify by aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries, thanks, everyone. Thanks, Randy, for jumping on that. I know it was late notice and stuff. All right. Are we at reports now? Department reports?
So, yeah, this last month I've had meetings with HMA and YMCA regarding community center planning. And discussion involved how we would move forward with fundraising and working with the YMCA. So we kind of held off on, kind of, we held off on reviewing those proposals. And now that we're moving forward with the YMCA, we're gonna move forward reviewing those proposals. As you know, from the last meeting, Randy and I met with the principal of St. Joseph Catholic School in regards to safety concerns, and then you approved moving forward with that study. Staff and the fire chief and assistant fire chief and Dwight and I, we met with a Mayo ambulance, Stearns County dispatch. So that conversation is ongoing in regards to how we can reduce medical calls for our fire department. The chief and I have a meeting, fire chief, with the area city administrators and area fire chiefs to learn more about that fire study. So that's coming up this week on Wednesday. Staff presented the city's state bonding request for the County Road Two and Ninety-four infrastructure to the Senate Capitol Committee, and we will be presenting to the House this week on Thursday. Personnel committee met to discuss looking at the compensation update. We received eighteen applications for police clerk and we interviewed five candidates. And that was on your agenda this evening to approve the hiring. Our new recreation director, Rhonda, she, I have to give her kudos, she's been doing fabulous. She's organizing a lot of events, including a yoga class and a five K and is working with CSB as well as community education, having recreation opportunities in St. Joseph. Some upcoming meetings, we have EDA tomorrow, the rural area administrators are meeting this week. And then lastly, I just want to say that LMC will provide training to staff and council at the end of October, early November. So a couple of potential dates are October twenty-sixth or the twenty-seventh from five thirty to seven thirty, so two hours. So if you know your, one of those dates. So if you know your availability this evening, we certainly can set that already or we can correspond via email. It's up to you.
Email.
Email?
Do you have a building?
My question is, the twenty-sixth, wouldn't that be a working session, it's the last Tuesday of the month?
Well, it's double working, double working session for you.
So we usually, so normally with the work sessions you have every other month. We've been meeting since spring every month because of budget. So I anticipated that we would actually go back to our every other month. So that's why that date is an option.
I don't know what you guys say, but twenty-sixth, if I was to have it blocked off thinking we're working, but.
This is for you two.
The LMC, LMC coming out.
League of Minnesota City, okay.
Set the date, I'll be there.
So we'll plan on the twenty-sixth.
Figure that's just a work session anyway.
You can go if you want, but it's the same admin, you know, on board, we do. Anyway, so have they picked a building yet for the SESU?
I could get you the true perspective of what goes on.
Campaign, capital campaign.
I sent them an email last week and they have not, not the senate, but the House. Yeah, that, they have not sent me the map yet. They were going to, they were waiting till they confirmed all the members from the House committee that were gonna be in attendance to let us know, so I haven't seen that yet.
They don't know what building they're in?
The person that I spoke to is from Minneapolis and they didn't know, they had a map. They were just gonna send it all together though with all the information, so.
Okay, very good, when you hear, let me know, okay. And we should probably talk before that because they've reduced it from thirty minutes to fifteen. And these are, I've been.
To ten, ten. Down to ten now.
Well, the last time I was at, it was like speed talking and here's your clicker. I do remember that, but, and okay, yeah, very good, thanks Therese. Who's number two on this list?
That would be community development.
You guys can get this in order, because, okay, community development, yeah.
Yeah, so I'll just highlight a few things out of the report for this month. So continuing to do business retention visits as needed. And also, when available, creating a database. So maybe no, but this, we send off email, blast sporadically, things that, you know, tidbits of information that may be helpful to our businesses, so trying to update that database. The EDA is gonna meet tomorrow, they're gonna talk about some strategies and priorities for the next year or so. To piggyback on that, we've been working preliminarily with a developer on potentially trying to pursue a grant for the JR mobile site. So hopefully, we'll see what EDA says tomorrow. And also, just continuing to have lots of meetings with realtors and developers. There's lots of things brewing up in the queue. Actually, this afternoon I got a plat request for Rivers Bend, which if you're familiar with Lanigan Way, that road up there, so it'd be right to the north of there for a townhome development, fresh on my desk this afternoon. So that'll be coming in October to the council. And then also, just establishing a meeting with the principals from Kennedy later this month just to talk and understand if they have any concerns. And then also met with the CMBA gentleman, Steve Galtwalt, and had a conversation with him just to see and hear what concerns they may have and start developing that relationship. So be happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Questions, Councilor?
Yeah, have we been enkled on any housing developments happening? Because we haven't had any housing development for a long time in the city.
Yeah, so the River's Bend one, yeah, we had inquiries on that one probably a month or so ago. So that one's kind of come pretty fast, but that'll, I believe it's thirteen lots of townhomes that will probably entail. There's been other conversations in other areas for housing and continuing of a second or third phase for different areas. But that hasn't risen to a formal submittal at this point, yeah.
Thanks, Nate. Finance?
Kind of have some of the similar meetings as others, but you know that we passed the budget in September, still working on the enterprise budget and fine tuning a few things in the operations budget. So plan to have another conversation at the next workshop about budget. The state bonding request, I've been involved in that, as well as reviewing some of the things with Trovex busing. I believe they intend to submit an update to their abatement request that the council had approved an original abatement. But now that it's a couple of years delay, they may, they're looking at asking for a new request on that. I've been involved in the community center discussions. The utility billing, I wanted to let you know that we did actually shut off utility bills for the first time since February of twenty twenty, before pre-COVID. And I would have to say that it went very well, both from the public work staff and from Vicki in my office. They handled that, getting that going again very well. I think we ended up actually only shutting off seven accounts. And by the time we left that day, there were three left that have now been taken care of. So we put out notices, we've, we sent letters, we put out notices on the doors, the public work staff did, and tried to make every accommodation to help folks get in and hopefully not have to shut off water. So where we sent out originally two hundred delinquents, we were down to seven that we actually shut off. So kudos to all of them that worked on that. They really worked hard to try to smooth out that process.
Is that all those seven turned on again?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, they have been. The CVB ordered some new t-shirts and ball caps, so I just wanted to let people know that it's like Joe Town, the Joe Town logo from the Visitors Bureau. They're being sold over at the Minnesota Street Market, so if anybody's interested in those, they are there. So we're kind of helping track with that inventory and the sales of those so that we can continue that program and restock. Been attending meetings, I have the EDA down here, but other meetings too with the budget. I have a webinar coming up for the stimulus money. We have some reporting that we have to do annually on that, so I have some webinars set up to figure out how to do those. I also assisted with scoring the police clerk applications. Did not sit in on the interviews, but helped with that and kind of helping with some reporting, COBRA reporting on other employees. And then upcoming, I will be going to the House Capital Campaign Committee as well on Wednesday, or Thursday. Got the workshop coming up and then letting you know that next week I'll be out for a couple of days. It's the annual Minnesota Government Finance Officers Conference, and so I'll be up in Alexandria for that. So out for a few days. And then we will be meeting with SCAWAC, which is the wastewater, area wastewater at St. Cloud here, coming up in a couple of weeks.
Lori, the abatement process, we want, you say they may need to reapply? And so we have to go back to District Four, Seven Forty-two as well?
Yes, and they're aware as well.
Okay, very good, thank you. Mr. Wenzman?
Mayor, council, staff. My monthly summary, been working diligently with the street projects. What we got going on in the alley, Twentieth Avenue, Eighteenth, chip seal is complete. And crack sealing for the season, we're looking to be complete by the end of this week. Been working some water band issues. There's four of us that completed our bi-annual smart salt churning certification course. I'm researching options to try and get some lighting out at the dog park. One of the options, there is a power pole out there, so I have reached out to the power company. I've sent them an email to see what, just what it would take to put a light on that pole. We're looking at our plow routes, maintenance on our plow routes. We have gotten some of our equipment out, sort of blowing the cobwebs off of it. Conducted some preventative maintenance and checks on our winter equipment. And we did finally get around to replacing all of the decorative street lights, bulbs to LEDs, so they all match.
They all match up and down college, like they're all white, we don't have amber and white.
Correct.
Thank you.
They're all an LED light.
That's been bugging me for six years.
Yes.
Now I want you to change it back.
That was a lot of work.
I like the amber light.
One or the other.
I want them mixed, you know, one of them.
Well, you know.
Well, you don't want to get them replaced.
There wasn't a lot of grass to mow this summer, so. So staff doing their normal, street sweeping, street maintenance, flushing sanitary sewers, store pond maintenance, reading and repairing meters, park maintenance, and so forth. Upcoming meetings and events, staff will continue their continuing education for water and wastewater. I do have a community outreach this week at Centennial Park on Wednesday night. Simuia Monthly Meeting will be on the twenty-third of September. Park Board on the twenty-seventh, Safety Training with the League of Minnesota is on sixth October. And then I will attend the Minnesota Fall Expo, six to seven October at the Rivers Edge Convention Center. And that's really a winter maintenance kind of best practices forum, you know, for surrounding cities and stuff, so. Depending, any questions?
Any questions for Ryan?
Yeah, what did you do with the park lot? Just curious.
They pretty much came in and took all the parts and pieces back, so.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, they're gonna repurpose them.
You didn't have to deal with it then?
We just had to dismantle it and bring it back to the shop, so, yeah, it was, it was a smooth transition.
Okay, good, good.
Anything else? Okay, I lost my place here a little bit. On the police report, sorry, on the police report, you'll notice that we did hire a new clerk, a police clerk. Candy Voight, now I'm not sure, it doesn't say here, when did she start, like?
October eleventh.
Okay, I'm looking at the agenda, okay. So just so you guys are aware that we do have new, someone new come in to help with the administration side of it, the police side of it. Okay, mayor reports, anything else? Any question for any of the staff members? Okay, mayor reports, I have like one item. And Kevin's aware, we went to the APO meeting and the APO sent, I think I called you two about it. They sent out a, I don't know what, a regional recommendation on trails, parks, or sorry, trails and sidewalks in all the six cities and St. Joe is included in it. And it came back with some recommendations and so I bug Nate and Therese where the recommendations come from. And because, for you new members, there've been four studies on parks and trails around in St. Joe, and I don't think any of them align. SEH did one back in like twenty sixteen or something. And then we contracted through the APOS RF to do a corridor study at County Seventy-Five and the crosswalks there. The Master Park Plan has one, and now the APO has one, and they don't align per crap, if you ask me. We have four independent agencies all doing their own study and nothing aligns. And so when APO comes out with recommendations, say, well, this should be your number one priority. And actually, the number one priority is a sidewalk from Elm to Fifteenth Street on One Thirty-three. That's your number one priority. And I'm going, that's a sidewalk that would never ever get used. So what I think we should do, council, work session, staff, is try to look at those four documents and get some real priorities. Like crossing Seventy-Five is a real issue to me, fourth and College and, but there's some connections, and I think this comes in our Master Park Plan, connections that are missing. It's not that APO didn't do a good job, I just think they missed the boat on what our priorities are. And so there are four documents out there. Again, SRF, the APO, SEH, another one out there, I'm not sure where, but. And again, Counselor, this is kind of up to you on how do you want to direct this? But you know, there's not one document that says this is our bible. We have four different bibles, four different organizations doing it, yeah, Bob.
I know SEH did original trail plan back in ninety-eight, ninety-nine, somewhere in that timeframe.
And they updated, they took that and updated it in the Master.
Yeah, ours are, I think they were updated in the two thousand eight Park Plan, and then it was updated again in the two thousand twelve Transportation Plan. So those are the two documents that we were involved on your behalf from a master planning perspective.
Transportation plan, but then you did the Master Park Plan, there's also trails section in there as well.
Yes.
This was, this was back when Joe, when Joe Bettendorf was involved.
Yep.
Are you suggesting that we look at those?
Yeah, number one. Well, again, I'm not exactly sure, I just.
Calculate on first to last.
You know, every once in a while we set aside some money to make the connection. You know, every once in a while we set aside some money to make the connections and we, SRF came across with some really good recommendations on how to improve the crosswalks on Seventy-Five, the corridor, and the more we use Wobegon and we have to cross south or north to south, the more issues that's gonna be. Yeah, I, what I'd like to do is send these all to you and at least have a session about, and what is our priority and kind of, you know, kind of, all the mode, I want to take this, I want to take that, or whatever.
Something that probably don't make sense.
Yeah, something that, that sidewalk from Elm to Fifteenth made no sense, I couldn't understand how Fred came up with that. I mean, that's not on any document we ever saw.
From Elm to Fifteenth on the north side?
On one thirty-three.
Hmm.
Was there already a sidewalk there?
No, it goes, it stops at, stops at Elm, he's talking about going from Elm farther north.
Yeah.
Where?
Fifteen.
Exactly, exactly.
That's what I said, I said it just, it doesn't jive with, with where our traffic, our pedestrian traffic is.
The other context I think the APO staff tried to apply was a regional trail perspective as opposed to local trail perspective. So the, the example that you cite coming out to County Road one thirty-three, I think was based on an understanding that there'd be a regional trail along County Road one thirty-three between, say, St. Joseph and, and Sartell, so.
Very possible.
A different scale of review.
Extension of the Wobegon. So on the way park, we'd be going to Sartell.
After, the takeaway I got from the last APO is that we need internally to look at it somehow. And I don't know what that vehicle is, but we need to evaluate it ourselves and say, let's, you know, start putting the pieces back together, cause they've been out there for eight or ten years.
So you would forward those to us?
I will, I'll send, uh, I'll send all the, uh, links and documents to Therese and she will forward it on to you if that's okay. And then, I don't know, maybe, what, Nate, yeah?
Yeah, no, just real quick, one thing that'd be nice too about that is, you know, we have, uh, programs like the Transportation Alternative Program, which is meant towards, uh, a, a grant source for filling in those gaps. So getting kind of that priority in that sense from the council is gonna really help staff, so we can strategically target those grants. Um, I think the TA program opens, I wanna say October, so we may not, you know, have time this year, but if we do, um, that would be nice for.
When would you like to get together once we?
I don't know, again, October twenty-sixth.
Yeah.
I was just gonna say, we were set up.
Pick something.
Again, we can, uh, once you go through it, we can pick and choose a date, there's, you know, it's not an urgent priority that's gonna burn somebody's house down or anything like that, but same time, it's something we need, should address. We, we don't need four documents.
Probably a good early, uh, next year project.
Well, if we can get it aligned somewhere in the winter, maybe we can move it forward and stuff like that, but.
It's pretty, I mean, because it becomes the fall season here pretty.
It's kind of a glaring, um, whole of four organizations, all coming up with different recommendations and no consolidation among, um, staff or council, so that is my report for the night.
Shall I move to adjourn the meeting?
Second.
Motion in second to adjourn, all those in favor signify by aye. Aye, opposed, we are adjourned, thank you all very much for attending.